For everyone here, we're going to delay the start by about 10 minutes just to allow anyone from the public to come in since the traffic. Thank you for your patience. It looks like at least hopefully everyone's here that's going to be. I would like to call the order, the December meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. If you will join me with the, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Any changes to the agenda? I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Second? All in favor? The agenda is approved. Any changes to the minutes from last meeting? I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. All in favor? Aye. The minutes are approved. We, are there any public comment that not to do with either the Park West Village or the sign changes? Okay, no, then we will move on. So now we are back to number seven for the major amendment to Park West Village. Yeah, Thomas, if you'd like to at least catch us up with where we are.
All right. So I'm not going to go through the entire presentation again, but I'll, you know, I'll briefly just set the stage in case there's anybody, you know, here in the, in the audience that wasn't able to make the last meeting. But this is a planned development amendment for Park West Village. And essentially with this amendment, Park West Village is asking to demolish an existing commercial theater as well as, you know, two other buildings for a total of 64,804 square feet, and then redevelop the site with 27,700 square feet of retail, 21,000 square feet of office, 312 multifamily dwelling units, and a redesign of the outdoor plaza and space. And 7% of the additional 312 units will be designated as affordable housing. So just to kind of go into some of the things that, that we talked about last meeting, at least the staff was asked to gather in terms of further data. We were asked to get some traffic accident numbers at the key intersections of Park West Village. So at the Cary Parkway and Village Marketplace intersection, there were a total of 30 accidents in the past five years, and 0% of these crashes included fatalities, 20% included injuries, and 80% included property damage only. Chapel Hill Road and Market Center Drive also had a total of 30 accidents in the past five years, and 0% included fatalities, 13% included injuries, and 87% included property damage only. And then Morrisville Parkway and Bristol Creek Drive had a total of 26 accidents in the past five years, and once again, zero fatalities, 19% included injuries, and 80.77% included property damage. There was also some requested information on the estimate of the amount of school-aged children that the proposed development would generate, and we, we did coordinate with, with Wake County Schools and obtain their updated 2023 calculator and numbers. And the calculation found that the additional 312 dwelling units would be projected to generate 38 school-aged children. And I believe on that type of note, the applicant also has some information regarding school-aged children that are found in, in some of their other properties that they manage. But with that, that's really the only updates I have. I'm happy to answer any other questions. And I know the, the applicant is, is here as well, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Thomas. So the public hearing for this is still open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak from the public for this item? Okay, we have none. That being said, I will close the public hearing, and then we can move on to the discussion. So do you guys want to, okay, sorry.
Tom Lowell with Casto. I just want to give a little flavor to the data we provided related to the children in, in the residential component. So what we did is we have, we utilize a property management company who is one of the largest in the country. They manage a million units across their system, which is within the country and globally. And what they do is they look at this, in this area, they have about 75 properties that they manage. They look for like product. So what we're talking about is one and two bedroom units, and they look for those products. And that's what's on the paper that was given to you. And it gives, and they're all just within Wake County. And if you look at the data, they have data of how many people live in the unit, how many pets are in the unit, you have dogs, cats, and how many children are in the unit. And if you look at tho, that data, you can see there's a variation from zero to up to, I think the highest was like 5% or 6%. But the average looked about, be about 3%, which is about what we said last time. And part of, one of those projects, projects is the district laws. 118 units, and there are three children there. So we're, we're in that 3% range. So we feel like the, the actual data that we're getting from people who have that data of how many kids are at these apartment, or living in these apartment complexes, is maybe different than what you're getting from an estimator based upon, you know, a broader density calculation. So again, we think it's closer to 3%, which brings that down to probably a 9, 10. But even if you set on the high end where it was 6%, that's still 20 children, which is half of what the other one is estimating. So again, I just hope you can consider that, that that's actual data that's derived from, you know, all the information that they have when people report who's living in the units.
And this is, obviously, these may have other size units, but they just took the data from the two, one and two bedrooms, you're saying?
That's correct. That's, they look for like product. Yeah, they have about 75 complexes that they manage. So these are the ones in Wake County that had, were limited to one and two bedroom units.
Thank you. So I guess we should have a more discussion. Everybody's had some time to think. Any other questions that you have for anybody? I guess, start with you, Tim.
We're going to get further information around the traffic impact analysis. Caleb Orr, transportation planner for the town. So the, the applicant did submit a traffic memo upon their original submittal. Basically, you know, we have several thresholds for a TIA. That would be 1,000 trips a day, or 100 trips an hour, doesn't matter what hour of the day. So they submitted that traffic memo. What we're looking at is from that original TIA, and those original traffic volumes, is our net gain from the new development. Does that trigger a TIA? And, and the results of that memo are no, it does not trigger a TIA for, for this rezoning.
So maybe, maybe explain that a little bit more. So we're putting in potentially an, an extra 312 units in this development, right? Just on the housing side, forget about the additional commercial component of that. Using that, the number of bedrooms, the number of cars, that folks will be commuting back and forth to work, to other things. What's the, the number of trips? Do we, do you have an estimate of that? And if we don't, what would trigger?
Sure. Okay, great question. So there are, the, the TIAs are developed with a, using what is called the ITE Trip Generation Manual. It's a generation manual that is used around the United States to estimate based on land use, different land uses, what your traffic is going to be from each land use. And so all of the land uses provided by the applicant were, were kind of plugged into that manual, and, and traffic volumes provided to the town from that manual. It's kind of confusing because we already have a development that's approved, has an approved TIA. So when we're looking at it from those thresholds that require a TA, right, 1,000 trips a day, 100 trips an hour, what we're looking at is, okay, so what, what addition, how many additional trips are we calculating? And actually, we are, we're calculating based on that manual that is, that is you, that the standard used, is that we're actually reducing the amount of trips from this, from this, this rezoning. And that is based on the, the ITE Trip Generation Manual.
So just, just want to clarify. So it would trigger by 1,000 extra trips a day?
It would be triggered by 1,000 trips a day or 100 trips an hour.
Okay.
And it would be, you know, extra trips from what's already, what's already been provided in that original TIA.
Okay, so from a language perspective, just trying to understand that if I'm putting in an additional 312 apartments.
Sure.
Right? 312 people, they will all have a car, right? We're saying that, that they're not going to leave and come back once a day?
So what we're saying is, they're also removing things from the site as well. And so when you, when you factor in all of those different land uses that are changing, including the apartments, as you, as you pointed out, that it's actually a net reduction in trips generated per that manual.
So who provide, so they provide, they have somebody from a trap, from a engineering firm that is the one that kind of put the data in the spreadsheet or whatever and came up with it, and then they send it to you. And then, in your opinion, it seemed reasonable, what they did, like?
Good, okay, that's a good point. So the applicant hires a traffic engineer, and it, it has to be sealed by a traffic engineer. I, as a transportation planner, will review it. We also have a consulting firm that has a traffic engineer on staff to also review that. And so based on the, the review, you know, all of the numbers are accurate based on that manual, and, and that's where that conclusion came from. So two, yes, that, that's correct.
I have no questions. I just wanted to thank staff for providing us with the information that was requested, and thank the applicant for accommodating us and the delay and returning and providing some additional insight.
Did we have some, a traffic engineer here or not tonight?
We do, we do have the applicant's traffic engineer here, who did provide our, our trip memo.
I think it would be helpful. Could you raise your hand? You're here. Explain so we understand. I think there's a hesitancy to understand your background. Are you an engineer, or, or maybe not even to get personal credentials? When we look at engineers for a building, it's easy to say that's right or wrong, but it seems the studies are being viewed as an opinion. Is that an engineer? Are you an engineer? What's the process? How do we build some level of confidence that it's not just your opinion and you read a book, that that's a true engineering field, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Sure. And, and just please state your name and your affiliation and.
Absolutely. Kevin Dean. I'm with Kevlin Horn and Associates, 300 South Main Street in Holly Springs. I, these settings are the only places where I get to be excited by being a traffic engineer. It's boring at dinner parties, and I won't talk about it a lot at Christmas. But yes, I have a civil engineering degree from NC State. I've been doing traffic analysis for 12 years now. And so like Caleb mentioned, we have, the Institute of Transportation Engineers compiles the Trip Generation Manual with thousands of data points for the various land uses. And that's the NCDOT and Town Accepted methodology for this. And then we put, we run the, we run the calculations for the various land uses based on the data out of IT. And then we submit it, and it is a, a sealed engineering document that is, like Caleb mentioned, reviewed. It's the same thing we would do if we were submitting a traffic study. It's the same approach for a, a new site, for a new study that would be submitted to the town or NCDOT. It's the exact same approach, except in this case, the, the, the trips didn't rise to the level of warranting a full traffic study, and that's why we're at a memo. But yes, it is a, as much as people tease about traffic engineers, it is a, it is a real thing.
So when you say it's sealed, what does that mean?
It means that my professional engineering seal, the same that would go on a set of plans for a bridge or a building or roadway design set of plans, I have an engineering seal that, that's applied to a trip generation memo.
And then do you also utilize things like with buildings? Do you sometimes run a simulation instead of just looking at Excel spreadsheets? Do you have access to those types of technology?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. So when we, if we, if a, if a traffic impact analysis was required, we have a software called Synchro, which is you create a roadway, a, you create a roadway network that matches the existing roadway network, and then we input existing count data, the number of lanes, signal plant, signal timing information, you know, what type of signal heads, is it protected or permitted movement? And then that software runs all of the capacity analysis calculations, and then outputs the results. Where, when you, when y'all see a TIA get discussed and you hear stuff like level of service and delay, Synchro is the software that provides those results. So it's, it's all based on the Highway Capacity Manual, and the Synchro software is what compiles that, the inputs we have, and then outputs the results. So yes, if it got to a full traffic impact analysis, that would be the software that we would use.
And then your relationship with the developer. They're hiring you. Are you independent of the project? What's your relationship to make this look good or bad for the people that hire you? Can you explain that?
So I am hired, so Tom Lowell and Casto hired us to perform the analysis. But I, as much as I like Tom, I think he's a great client, I wouldn't risk losing my engineering seal or my job to fabricate trip generation for Park West Village or any project. And so while he does pay me, I'm still obligated as a professional engineer to, to look out for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. So.
Thank you. I didn't mean it to sound confrontational. I just, I just wanted to make sure because we've had, you know, just not between the board, but from residents of the understanding of who does the study. And sometimes we think the word analysis isn't the same as engineering. We analyzed it, and this is my opinion. So this is a little bit stronger. This is an engineering field.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Actually, I'd love to follow on. I think that was really helpful in, in the questions. One of the, the questions that we get from residents is the cumulative effect of these studies. So we do, we do one in a property, and it looks at, okay, it didn't hit the threshold.
Sure.
There's more traffic in the road.
Yep.
And the next one comes up, and it doesn't hit that. But people, they'll look at the road and say, well, today it's crowded, and tomorrow it's congested, and then it's, and there're little, how do we, we think about that from a perspective of death by 1,000 cuts?
So that's a great question. I think the way NCDOT applies this, and I'm sure most municipalities, is that you can't, you can't effectively phase your way out of a traffic impact analysis. So if 100 single-family homes was the threshold for requiring a TIA, y'all wouldn't allow a developer to submit plans for 99 homes 12 times, and now they have 1,000 homes, and they've never done a traffic study. So typically, if it's under the same ownership or same parcel or property group, that, that, if the cumulative trip generation would warrant a traffic study. So even if a phase, even if phase one of a project wouldn't necessarily warrant it, when you got to phase two, you'd be expected to analyze the total trip. So not just the second phase, you would analyze what happened in the first phase and the second phase. And then typically, in areas that are growing or developing like Morrisville, it's not only this development that may analyze the traffic, but if a development comes down the street, what, when we're coordinating with your staff to do that traffic study, we have to account for. we have to account for the traffic generated by other projects in the area. So then you get these growing traffic studies that not only consider the impacts of the specific site, but then other projects in the area. And so that, that's typically, there's usually a catch at the level of the site-specific traffic study, and then as other projects come in, those are including traffic from multiple developments in the area. And then when y'all go through and you develop your comprehensive transportation plan, that looks more holistically as development, and how the development trends are going to look over the course of 20 or 30 years as opposed to two- or three-year increments. And so, there are lots of touchpoints as development occurs to prevent, because I, I can appreciate that it seems like, when, when you see development coming out of the ground and you haven't heard that a traffic study was done, it seems like it gets missed, but there, there's usually get captured really well.
So then under this, if they, let's say this was very successful, and they decide they want to tear the target down, build apartments there, then that might trigger because we're not, right? Because Park West is a large parcel.
Sure.
They do more work on Park West, then eventually that would trigger.
Yep.
This analysis, and it would go back sort of almost retroactively to what is being going, including what's done now.
That, that's exactly right. So, so it, we, we look at the cumulative parcel and development as opposed to just, what could you change to avoid doing a traffic study?
And follow up on that. If, if the applicant came in tomorrow and we applied, there's something different, we would ask for the same, you know, same information to verify, does it actually meet the thresholds that, that we need to have TIA?
Okay, all right, thank you. Rick, did you have any questions?
I picked tonight with the traffic in town already. But question for you, when you say cumulative.
Yes.
So everything, just to use Park West as an example, everything that's currently built, being built, parallel to Red, McCrimmon, I'm not McCrimmon, but Morrisville there.
Yes, sir.
And Bexley and all that, that's all taken into consideration in addition to what's being proposed?
Yes, sir. Yep. So that, that, that traffic is all accounted for. You're exactly right. And along the way, and Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way Park West has developed, there have been pieces that weren't initially included that required their own traffic study. So for example, Earth Fair had its own traffic study because it wasn't initially in the bounds overall, overall Park West Village. And so that, there was a traffic analysis done separately for Earth Fair that was added on top of the traffic being generated by Park. So those type things, when there are pieces that are added or changed, those do, if they rise to that level, they get captured as traffic studies.
That's a good point. Just a question for me, again, clarification. So if it's in Earth Fair, it's based on the nature of the business and the knowledge of the business and what attracts.
Yes, sir.
Based on that. And it changes to another, is there a requirement to take a look at the new brand of businesses coming in, like a Trader Joe's, and their impact?
So there, the Trip Generation Manual doesn't distinguish between users, so it is a, it is a compilation of data, and so that, we don't, we don't typically have user-by-user data or calculations for that. Now, there are often recognitions and discussions, if, if you were, if, if you were going to swap out a bank for a Chick-fil-A, like something that was drastically different from a trip generation perspective, then we'd be having a completely different discussion. But when it's cha, with the use itself is the same, supermarket to supermarket, bank to bank, then, then we don't, we don't run different analysis.
Similar to your, what you're hearing today, you know, a rezoning, a rezoning would be an opportunity for the town to have a script and to ask you, what, what are the uses going to be like in terms of the traffic generated from this new, this user proposing? So to kind of point, you know, the ITE handbook, it has the use of that a little more broad, but then when it comes to things like zoning, that's where we get into the details of what's the difference.
Yeah. Yeah, one thing that, that Tom mentioned is that the, one thing to, to remember is the 2007 TIA that was the basis for the improvements that were required for Park West Village is what we're comparing against. And so when we talk about thresholds and we talk about comparisons, that was a very intense traffic study, you know, the, the, that it considered full build-out, and all the improvements were constructed day one. So when you, when you're thinking about, you know, you're tearing down a, a movie theater that doesn't have a lot of traffic going to it, and you're replacing it with apartments, we certainly expect there to be traffic from the apartments. What we're saying is that when you look holistically as a development compared to what all the improvements are designed to, to, to support, then we're still within those thresholds.
So that, that's really helpful. Actually, it was a question sparked for me when I looked at that, and it was 2007, is it comparing it to 2007 data?
It is comparing it to 2007 trip generation data, but not network volumes. And so typically, when you have a project of this size, we, we think about it as being a, a trip generation bucket. And so when, when we're looking at that, that way you can, if there are changes in uses, the, the goal is to stay under or around the amount of trips that the improvements are designed for, right? And so, whatever combination of uses that you propose on a site, you want to keep it within that. The benefit of developments like Park West Village is that you get traffic that's captured internally on-site. So when you, if you had an exclusively retail development, everyone would have to enter the development, and everyone would have to leave because there wouldn't be any other options. When you add apartments to a retail development, now you're mixing uses, and some of the people who live in the apartments are going to shop at the commercial uses, and they don't have to get out on the road to do their shopping. And some of the people who work in the retail establishments are going to live in the apartment. So you get benefits from that. So that's why when we look at a budget, you don't set it based on a number of, a number of apartments, a square footage of retail, you're looking at the total trips that are being generated, because the improvements are designed to, to accommodate that volume of traffic. So that's why, that's why we talk about comparisons and why you don't need, why there aren't traffic studies required every time you change a use, as long as you're staying in the thresholds of those studies.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You have one more question?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't capture a company you worked for?
Kimley Horn and Associates.
And are they one of the, is that just a local company, or?
So we're, we're national. We started, there are two civil engineering professors at NC State that started us 55-ish years ago. I may get that wrong and get fired tomorrow, but 55-ish years ago. And so we've been around doing this for a while. We, Kimley Horn did the initial traffic study for Park West Village in 2007, and so we've been doing work in and around the triangle for 50-plus years.
But you do national, this isn't just.
Correct, yes, ma'am, we're a national company.
And then, is that typical, or would a design, design-build firm normally have traffic engineering in-house, or do they always go outside for a consultant for that type of information?
Great question, both. So there are some companies, like Kimley Horn, that we have our own civil engineering, we, we have site civil design services, where those folks are designing the actual site, the utilities and infrastructure and all that. And we obviously have traffic. And there are other firms who do civil design, and they don't have traffic engineers. And then companies like Kimley Horn, Ramey Kemp, or VHB get hired to perform those services. So.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
If I could just add, the town also does retain a traffic consultant. So when an applicant submits, as Caleb indicated, the town's traffic consultant will review what has been submitted by the applicant to confirm if it was done in accordance with industry standards or not. So that is part of our standard process as well, and the applicant actually pays for the town consultant review of that.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you, I think we may be done. So any further discussion or any other questions or issues, anybody? So that being said, what, do we have anybody that's willing to make a motion and or read all of this? I guess, what are the feeling? Are people?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, hold on, that's fine, I mean, yeah, so, I mean, I guess in general, are you okay with everything? Maybe any discussion?
I'm still against, but. We need a discussion. No, I don't need further discussion.
Okay. So you're, you're just against it, just? Okay, yeah.
Motion?
Yeah, I mean, feel free to make a motion.
I find a proposed major amendment to be consistent with the town of Morrisville's comprehensive plan, and I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance 02023-312-0, the Morrisville Town Council approving a major amendment to the Park West Village mixed-use district approximately 106.83 acres of property located west of the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and Northwest Cary Parkway, subject to the conditions proposed in the petitionals' application. Further, I find that the proposed major amendment to the Park West Village mixed-use district is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is in the public interest because, one, the requested PD modification is consistent with the future land use plan. The future land use map shows this area as Regional Activity Center, which lists preferred uses including office, retail, shopping centers, restaurants, lodging, hospitality, mixed-use development, and multifamily residential. The proposed PD modification provides a balanced and integrated mix of these uses within the MUPD. Two, the mix, the requested PD modification encourages a design that fosters attractive destinations where people visit for an experience, a key consideration for RAC-designated areas in the future land use plan. It also seeks to create more outdoor dining seating and more usable open space plaza areas. Three, the proposed PD modification provides a smart shuttle connection internal to the site, a key consideration for the RAC-designated areas in the future land use plan. And four, the requested PD modification provides privately-developed affordable housing as called for by a key action item number 11 in the land use plan.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Hi? All, any opposed? Okay, did you get that, Brooke? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we will move on to the proposed sign plan for Spark. Mr. Elliot Ward.
All right. Just mentioned, I'm presenting I O 2023-435-0, it's proposed master sign plan for Spark development. Here is an aerial of the Spark Phase 1 site, consists of approximately 37 acres identified by Wake County in.
It's not on, no, there we go. Let me start over. All right, an aerial of the Spark Phase 1 site consists of approximately 37 acres and is identified by Wake County in 0756-33-0254. It is commonly known as 4877 McCrimmon Parkway, and the applicant is Trinity Capital Advisors. Here are the overall quantity, proposed quantities for each sign type. We will get to, they also added conditional notes, we'll get to those in a bit, but these quantities, it should be noted, will increase as future phases and are constructed. The applicant is proposing two of what they're referring to as Type A ground signs. These are comparable to the Type A monument signs in Section 5.16 of the Morrisville UDO. The town typically permits 32 square feet for the sign face. The applicant is requesting 66 square feet here. The max, typical maximum height that we would allow would be 15 feet, so they're not coming close to that right now. Should, as a reminder, the, the master sign plan allows the applicant to propose their own dimensional standards. When a sign permit is then applied for, the permit would be reviewed against the standards approved in that plan versus what we typically review them against in the UDO. So, just a reminder for everyone. Trinity Capital is proposing one of these Type B sign, ground signs, they're calling them. The sign is, could kind of be comparable to a mix of our Type A and Type B that we have in our UDO. The typical dimension standard shown on the slide of 16 square feet for a sign face, seven-foot max height, that's for our Type B sign. The applicant is proposing a sign face of 41 square feet for this Type B and a height of 10 feet and 3 inches. They're proposing two of these Type C wayfinding signs, they're calling them. This again aligns sort of as a mix between our Type A and Type B. The proposed height is 8 foot 6 inches, and sign face here is 38 square feet. As you can see, they're also proposing a bench, which would be lit up internally for people to sit on. And they're also proposing two of these Type D ground signs. These would best be aligned with our Type B ground signs in our UDO, and they are not exceeding our 16 foot, 16 square foot sign face and 7-foot height. They're actually meeting both of those. They're also proposing some additional building sign, building identification and wayfinding signs. All these are less, are less than the comparable dimension standards we have in the UDO, so they're not exceeding any of those. Specifically, they're, they're proposing five Type E building signs, six Type F secondary signs, five Type G vehicular wayfinding signs, and three Type H pedestrian wayfinding signs, shown with the dimensions here. As I mentioned earlier, the applicant also included some notes with the plan as well. Future signage for each type will be erected at the included locations mentioned here, and amendments to the sign plan will be handled with town staff through the minor modification Ground signs will, oh, sorry. Ground signs will not interfere with site triangles at intersections. Lights will not change color, their intensity, or flash in any way. The color temperature they're proposing for the, for the LED lights will be 6500K. We may get some clarification on that when we're finished. And lastly, wall signs were not included on this plan. Once tenants are confirmed for Spark, all the wall signs will follow typical sign permit standards in Section 5.16 that I mentioned earlier. So they're just going to follow our usual UDO requirements. Staff recommends approval of the master sign plan, application for the following reasons. The application complies with the stated purpose of regulations in UDO Section 5.16.1A. The request does not include any prohibited signs as identified in UDO Sections 5.16.2D, E, and F. The application does not include any temporary, temporary signage. The application is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the application does not conflict with any other provisions of the UDO or Morrisville Code of Ordinances. And here's the ordinance language. Board is asked to either recommend approval to the Town Council of the sign plan as presented, recommend approval with changes, or recommend denial. And that's all I have. I can answer any questions you may have. We also have a representative for Trinity here as well. Questions for them?
All right, thank you. So you mentioned the clarification, so do, does the applicant want to clarify that, or is that something that you had?
Yeah, we, we had asked them to, because I, I thought there might be some confusion about the lit signs and just, you know, the general.
Well, that's just the color of the internal bulb of the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, obviously, it's going to have different colors outside still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions, does anybody have or comments?
I like, I think it was the Type C, the light that you were talking about that you sit in, I, I really like that.
It's a good idea.
Have, the applicant's here? Does it change the color of your skin at all when you sit in there? You know, as females, we've got to ask those important questions. Are we going to look better, or are we going to look like we're in the meat tray sitting in there? Do you know? I mean, have, have, what does the color do to you when you sit there and you're waiting? Do you, you have tint, or do you look normal?
It's going to affect your.
Okay.
It's not that.
Okay, it's just to locate it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
On your 6500, is that natural or cool?
Could you go up to the podium, please?
Beyond cool.
Sure.
Thank you. Just want to make sure we capture everything for the minutes and those watching at home.
Shawna, maybe. I am an architect, the project manager actually with Hanbury Architecture Firm. We are the architects on this. And to answer the color light, the 6500 is equivalent to daylight. So when you kind of order, you know, LED bulbs from the store, it has different colors. This is equivalent to daylight. But there is that color acrylic behind it. So really, at the end of the day, you're just going to experience the color, color, the pure color rather than the bulb itself.
Sorry, I cheated. I've worked that grade. So what my question was at night, especially at night, if it's going to be the cool one, which is with the cool light, which is brighter, which would set more, or the natural, like you mentioned, is it daytime? It's equivalent to daylight.
Not sure we've specified to that degree yet. I mean, the, the acrylic itself is going to be the color that's presented. I'm not sure.
So I guess the design of these signs means that the internal light is not going to be actually seen as a light source. You're only going to be seeing the outside.
Still the brightness, cool white versus natural.
Right.
Natural's a little bit warmer. So I just didn't know if it's going to be a blue.
Sorry, it is more cool.
Cool?
Yes. Yeah. It'll be more of that blue light than the natural. Yes.
The only question I had, Elliot, when, when you said wall signage, I'm assuming you, does that mean like on an actual building wall signage? Or is that something like by a door?
Yeah, yeah. So.
Or all of the.
Signs that would have the tenant's name.
Okay.
Across.
Which might be high up on the building.
Correct.
Or it might be somewhere.
Yeah.
So all that would.
We've got specific requirements in the UDO in the signage section. There's also fire code standards about the size and so forth.
I got you. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Just one quick one, not necessarily with the logging, but is there any consideration in taking a look at the size of the signs and requirements, but also regards to the size of the buildings? Because you have 1500, 1.5 million on each side, which is going to be a good one up. So you need something to kind of help people locate that without getting lost in the actual size of the building. So an exception on this wouldn't be changing any other standards. Correct order.
Sorry, you referring to the wall signs again?
No, not wall. No, not wall. The first slide we saw with this, you know, identifying the building.
Okay.
This is just for this project only, correct? This is nothing to do, it will not change any Morrisville ordinances?
Correct. Yeah. All, all of our sign requirements in our UDO will stay the same. This is specific to their site only. And again, this is their, they are permitted to request one of these because we set parameters at 25 acres or more or 400,000 square feet of building area or more. And they meet the 25-acre requirement. So.
I think in the application, there is a justification, I remember seeing for that, which seems to make sense to me that this does need more signage, I think, in the typical project.
We did a separate one for Wake, the Wake Tech campus last year. We've got another one in the works. So, yeah.
Questions? Anybody willing to make a motion? Can you scroll that?
Nope.
This is an easy one. All right, feel happy.
Actually, my mortgage, 2023-453-0. Morrisville Town Council approving a master sign plan for the Spark development located at 4877 Crimmon Parkway, MSP 230003.
Yeah, you're recommending, yeah, approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Tim, second. All in favor? Aye? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Can move on to the staff comments.
Just a moment, bring up the newsletter. So just a little bit about what has been going on in, in Morrisville and the, and the planning and development world over the last month. We did get two new applications in. One is for the Loomis Building, which is about 30,000 square feet of commercial recreation space that's supposed right next to Wake Competition Center, kind of an expansion of that center. HSNC has also submitted a rezoning request for their campus. So that will be coming before you in the future as well.
Can I, the Loomis, is that, was that the old armored car company? Is that with that building or is that a different building?
I'm not sure what used to be in the building. It's at the end of the cul-de-sac. I don't know if that helps.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. No new town council approvals or administrative approvals in the last month, but a lot of, I guess, more of your long-range planning work has been going on. So in regard to affordable housing, staff is meeting with Habitat for Humanity to explore partnership for a Habitat project at 101 to 105 Church Street, which is nearby us at the corner of Morrisville Carpenter and Church Street. So we're, we're exploring that possibility with them. The Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the 2055 Plan, has also kicked off. Also doing a study of the Church Street corridor in relation to TOD and the impact of TOD on Church Street, looking to see if that, if the CTP should be updated to widen Church Street from two to four lanes or not. And action on the TOD by town council is on hold pending the completion of that study. Phase one, public engagement for the Morrisville Parkway Access Management Study just concluded. So I hope all of you were able to participate in that. But public engagement has kicked off for Greenway feasibility study that we're undertaking for the Sturp Iron Creek Mills Springway, Greenway. And so that will be open until January 8th, if anyone is interested in participating in that. That is all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. So, word comments, Rick?
Questions?
Just comments, just closing the meeting.
Nothing set. We're thinking maybe 10, 11 town home units. But Habitat is, you know, doing their own design and kind of high-level engineering of that site, putting together a concept plan that will, should be able to take a look at in about a month.
That's a great job.
Those were good presentations today. Really enjoyed the Spark. I really liked the colors. And for some reason, it really just struck me as being modern. I'm really pleased with that.
Ken?
No comments. I just hope everybody has a healthy and happy holiday.
Tim?
Yeah, echo that. I think it would be great.
Same. Yeah, have a holiday for everyone. Then I guess that is it. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.